This evening is Dr. Jill Berkowitz and it's regarding the changes to the enrichment program this year that came about as a result of a couple of things. One, feeling that more differentiation needed to be done in the classrooms to begin with, and also the fact that we've been looking closely at cutting the enrichment program last year. And so this was a model that we put in between as a way of helping to really have the enrichment teachers work with regular classroom teachers to show them some models for enriching students in the classroom. Jill?
So what we maintained in switching from the tag model was the opportunities for a state of mind, the National Geographic beat, sixth grade physical, fifth grade teamwork counts, fourth grade math carnival, hanging sixth grade math carnival. The program as it became enrichment was remained K six model. It's an inclusion model where as they had done in the K two classes, they go, the teachers go into the classroom with the teachers and work out what, where the teachers believe that the opportunities for enrichment lie. And then they co-plan together and wind up teaching a wide range of opportunities to be able to give the students, all the students, the opportunity to be enriched in whatever subject they, they are choosing. So they collaborate with the classroom teachers and create a rotating schedule. They provide training and extended and enriched training opportunities for all students. And it has averaged out to be once a week for 40 minutes in each class, K six. So what actually is the enrichment that's taking place? They may work to deep embroider or even introduce experiments into the process. The writing process is expanded upon and worked more deeply along with the help of the enrichment teachers. Demonstrations which may not be possible for the classroom teacher to develop as they're responsible for covering the curriculum and working with all the students. So there are more demonstrations, performance opportunities for the students, contests, debates, and project-based learning. The enrichment teachers are trained to provide opportunities for the students that tap into different learning modalities to build their critical thinking abilities. Now with the Common Core, all teachers are having to manage that on, on a certain level for all students. But talented and gifted teachers are trained specifically in these particular skills that tap into a variety of talents for the students and prepare them with critical thinking. It goes beyond the classroom model. So that where they focus their work with the classroom teachers for the students and all those things that I mentioned earlier is an evaluation, synthesis, and analysis by the students. The value of the collaboration is that the relationship between the responsibility for content and the ability to create higher order thinking, learning opportunities exists because that's how talented and gifted teachers are trained. The classroom teacher is responsible for the content and the decision about where it's going to go, in four subjects and to cover the content. That's a huge job for the elementary school teacher. In this regard, the partnership with the enrichment teacher allows them to provide students with opportunities to have in-depth, further in-depth learning experiences that strengthen their understanding of concepts and content, that go beyond the responsibilities and the training of the regular classroom. So that's how, that was the model that we used this year.
Jill, did you say that in the day, the talented and gifted teachers have special training?
Yes.
Is that a special certification, like we have certified leading teachers? Is that a certification or just some expert classes that they don't become?
No, it's a certification.
It's a certification.
Okay. When we built the high school addition and made the renovations, we promised that the fitness center would be open to the community at some point, and we are ready to present you now with three models for doing that, two models, I'm sorry, for doing that. And Mr. Lanzoni is going to address that.
Today I'd like to discuss, as Dr. Powell said, a couple of options to give the community access to our weight room. Two of the options today will be presented. To get input from the board, consider these options and give me direction as to which one to pursue. Please keep in mind as you look at these, the fitness center would be available at night after athletic teams are finished using it. At this time, it would be available Monday, Wednesday, and Friday nights between seven and nine. The current schedule for the room has intramurals from three o'clock, I'm sorry, two to three, which is open to all students. And then from three o'clock on, our athletic teams are utilizing the room. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have teams going in from three o'clock to nine o'clock. On Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, teams are using it from three o'clock to seven o'clock. We have a variety from a football crew, boys soccer and track who are using the room at this time. Option one, option one would be similar to our adult ed model that we used to have in the district. It would be group fitness training sessions. We'd have an outside vendor, the fit squad, which is located in Duchesnes County. They would come in and provide the service. They would provide 10-week sessions offered throughout the year. Classes would be offered two, three times a week when it's available, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday nights. The cost would be approximately $200 per participant for the classes. And that money would go straight to pay for the trainers using the fit squad. Group sessions would include 10 to 15 participants per class. It would be open to all residents, ages 16 and up, and classes would range, they could accommodate all levels of fitness. Looking at the pros and cons of this option, the pros, there's no cost to the district. The guidance and instruction would be done by a professional certified trainer on how to use the equipment properly and teach overall fitness. Participants would be covered under the organization's insurance. The cons, there's cost to community members that choose to use it, and it's a controlled number of participants. Really, the classes are limited to up to 15 participants. Option two, option two would be open community hours. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday nights from seven to nine, it would be open to all community members. We ask students ages 16 and under to be accompanied by a parent or guardian. For this option, we need a paid supervisor to oversee the facility. We feel that's a safety and security issue, not having somebody in there. So it would be important to have somebody, community members would come in and sign in. Facility would be open, like I said, three days a week. The pros for this option, there's no cost for community members. Potential to have more participants using the facility in this option allows for more flexibility. People can come and go as they choose. The cons, there's a cost to the district for the supervisor. There could possibly be an increase in cost of maintenance of the equipment with potentially more people using the room. There's a lot of wear and tear that could happen. It's an unstructured use of the facility, which could result into more service. Those are the two options. Again, we're limited with the, with the time that we have to allow community use of the facility. But the good news is our coaches and our athletes are really taking advantage of it. You know, when we started closing the room, our ultimate goal was to build in, have our students use it, and I'm glad to see it's being done. But I'd like some guidance and, you know, direction from the board. I welcome your input. Is there any questions?
If you did, option one, would it be available during the weekends?
Weekends, I thought about. That would be an additional cost to the district. Could do, either option I think could be done with weekend use, but then it would be a cost to the district as far as the custodial coverage. I don't know if we can have it open to the community without a custodial present. But that's something that we can also look into, you know, what the cost would be for the custodian.
Especially if it gets a lot of use.
Yeah.
And then, option two, the liability comes to school districts?
That I'm not, 100% sure.
Under both, there is some liability, but the primary, an option one would be with the instructor that was there. Would that be all the same liability?
So on, option one, when it's, you said 20 classes, 200, I mean, what does 20 classes entail? I mean, is that a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they can pick?
It would be, it would be set either two or three days a week. And the trainers would, would set it up and we would, it would be set schedule of classes. And you would sign up, just like you would if you were joining a class at one of the college gym or law sports. You would sign up for the 20 sessions and then you would, you know.
Would it be kind of a aerobic class and a strength class, same type of?
Yeah, it's a mixture. They do a mixture of strength and cardio.
All in the one class?
Yes. So the classes range from 60 minutes to 90 minutes, and they do a mixture of strength training and cardio. As I said, it can accommodate any age, any fitness level. They vary the classes to meet the needs of the participants.
And then option two, what's, what's the capacity, like just open for, I mean, is there a point where you might have to turn people away?
It could possibly, you know, it's only, it's a short window. We're looking at possibly two hours. So if you were gonna go there to work out, everybody would come pretty much at the same time.
What's your capacity to that room?
I didn't speak to Mr. Dan, I don't think right now there's not a capacity for the room. That's something I could speak to David.
Are we limited because it's basketball season, spring season, and they, they're using the gyms at night and starting to fall in spring, is it to be open up more nights?
Right now, this schedule goes until April. So we have crew uses it, and once the spring season starts, the end of March, they'll be out in the water and there'll be less use in the weight room. Football's gonna use it year round. Indoor track is using it now. They'll continue with spring track. So the hours could change. We could gain an hour, maybe an hour in the springtime because of the season change.
During the summer, would that increase or is there no use?
In the, in the summer, the building's open until three. And again, if it was open later, we'd have to probably accommodate it, have a custodian on. But there could be some hours during the school, you know, between 7:30 and 3 o'clock where it could be available.
Do you have, if you hire someone, I mean, do they have to fit into a unit, a bargaining unit?
You probably have to fit someone at first step. You have people now that handle it at first step, correct? Your ball coach?
We have a, in the summer, we have a paid stipend for a coach that's primarily been used for students to come in over the summer. Four days a week, we open it in the morning from usually eight to 10, eight to 11. And there's a stipend, contractual stipend for that position.
I'm saying if you hire somebody for this seven to nine role, is there any stipulations on how they, it's a new thing, right? A new position can be whatever. My only feedback is, I mean, I'd like to at least explore a whole weekend, like some, some hours.
In addition to the weekday hours.
Yeah, whatever. I don't necessarily have a strong feeling of, of any way.
You know, the, the reason why I added the, the classes, having a, somebody come in there and a trainer, and people could sign up for the classes, was because it's such a short hour, it's gonna be difficult from seven to nine, you know, it's gonna be difficult. I, I see some people trying to fit in their, that, you know, their type of timeframe during the week to utilize it. So the set classes would be, participants would sign up and they would, they would know their schedule and they would come up and, you know, there's no, it's a cost. We don't have to have somebody there supervising the room. The trainers would open up and run the class and then custodian would close it down.
But there's a custodian there until what, 10 o'clock during the night? So if we did hire somebody that was in contractually obligated, we'd have three hours a night. We could add another hour per night for that meeting. So it'd be three hours, three hours for that night.
Yeah. From my experience, having practices in there, the custodians generally tell me I need to be out of there by nine o'clock because they do their rounds to, they do the security checks of all the doors, close all the lights. So between nine and 10 is the time that they're shutting the building there. So I know with my athletic teams, we stop practice at nine to allow them to do that.
I think he's also talking about somebody in addition to the custodian, if the custodian's on, you still would need the monitor or the, you know, the person in the room with them. Custodian could be anywhere in the building.
Yeah, in addition to the custodian.
Right.
He is responsible to maintain that room. What's the best means, ask, community members, I mean, that's what you gotta do. I mean, the other ones, plus the, the, the.
More other questions. Do you have the capability of doing a combination of both, like maybe two nights, two weeks, have classes so that people who prefer that model can do that? And then have maybe the third night and a weekend available for open rooms?
Okay. I was thinking that also, but I was kind of stuck on three days a week. But if we had a weekend day, I think that would work. I think two days a week for the classes, for the training sessions would be sufficient.
Right. And then it also fits nicely if it is a 20 sessions, you'd have 10 weeks or two nights a week. So why don't you work with Michelle to find a way of surveying parents, see what they think. Work on the hybrid model and see what they actually are possibly, and we'll bring that to the board.
Only, is there any chance of looking for any kind of grant, maybe to cover the person or the day, helping the community, whatever, I don't know what might be out there. But I mean, I need the ad costs for the time we're looking at cutting so much as well.
Good. The last part of the agenda has to do with the budget discussion. All of the board members have received a small packet. The first two or three pages are actually from the budget packet that was given out to the community and we're asking that we, of course, also receive. It's essentially the prior reduction from savings on location, as well as a page that says other possible reductions and lists virtually everything that we've talked about in the last two or three years as we've been placing cuts. The additional two pages is the draft of what I envision as the presentation for the next meeting, which was February 13. And we have seen different versions of this before. This version is put on board docs for you on Friday. It's really to get your questions, your feedback, to make this a better presentation before it's presented officially in February. It's organized into three years because, as you know, the tax cap is going to be with us a while. And we've already heard from Michelle that the cuts for this year are 1.3 million dollars if we want to keep to the tax cap of what turns out for us at this point to be approximately 2.8%. She looked ahead to the following year using even looser assumptions since the further out you go, the tougher it gets to predict. And it looked like about 1.2 million. We did not reject into the third year, but we're assuming it will be somewhere in the same vicinity of a million to 1.2 million again for the third year. So what I've done was given you three years of proposed budget cuts, also organized by location, so that you have a sense of the impact to the total district and what's coming from different places. It's spread over three years. There are rationales for where things have been placed in terms of year one, year two, year three. And it also gives you then the totals for each of those problems, each of those years. And you'll see that in each of those years, you're actually still a little bit short of the mark. Other possible cuts that have not been necessarily seen on the list of reductions before. And again, it's open for your questions and discussion. As you can see, it cuts quite easily. From that page in the budget packet that was presented and also given to the public last time, that list of other possible cuts, I would say that the only thing that is on that list that is not included in one of the three years is the half taken department. So it shows how deeply we have cut. This is not the one year situation. Unfortunately, it's probably not a two-year situation. There is the possibility of a third year perhaps at that point, maybe the board will feel comfortable asking for a 60% approval to go higher than the tax cap. But we can't assume that.
As with the summer academy, is there, when I was going over the packet that we had last time, and I will talk about that probably, the ratio is very low, adults to teachers per student. Is there any way that we could keep the program with a higher ratio so that these kids are still getting the service and so they're not at a disadvantage when they start in here? Is there any saving in doing that?
I would say yes, you probably could do that. Christine Brady, who supervised that program this summer, kept very extensive reference and had, that attendance was atrocious. And we don't believe that the academic impact was that great because it did not appear to be something that kids and families took seriously. It was more or less sporadic kind of thing where if there was nothing else going on, they would come to the program. And many of them were absent 50% of the time, I don't even need the actual data. As a result, I mean, somebody, Christine, has been in education a long time and in many different roles, principal, assistant, super, technical, curriculum. She did not feel that it was something that was cost effective for what we were getting out of it. So it's something you can look at. The other piece of it is that one of the recommendations for next year is to reduce her position to 10 months, which then impacts the supervision of the program as well. I mean, that's relatively minor. I think the more important thing is the fact that it really doesn't seem to be something that's making a difference.
I'm not ready to start talking about individual positions and things at this point in the game. Mine's a little more conceptual, so pass out the budget, this budget cut. Now, do you plan on doing anything more on the list at all, add you?
Only if questions come up about things. I mean, this was, I think, pretty detailed as it started. So if people raise questions, that we can, you know, find information that we need to add to it, we can help revise it and expand it.
So I mean, I do like the fact that we're, you know, looking ahead at the other years. I mean, the one, the one thing that I, I don't see is, you know, taking into account that we've got two energy programs going on, and there's savings there. I mean, these are all positions, so to speak. And there are certainly things that can be merged. I mean, I know towers, I mean, that's the big piece. I might get that. I know we've gotta go there at some point. There's still things we're currently doing to save money that aren't reflected in this yet. Somehow it needs to be done, you know, along with other, you know, some efficiencies. I mean, I realize they don't add up, but I mean, we've been working on all these processes, you know, on a, you know, a business office. I mean, I, you know, I just don't see any of that reflected somehow.
What I would say first is, I mean, yes, you're absolutely right. We don't show that. Part of the answer to that is that, well, we're still not, we're still what's listed here. We still haven't met the savings that we need. So we're hoping that some of those energy efficiency kinds of things will help bridge the gap. The other piece is that all of the numbers that you see for the next three years are using this year's costs as an estimate. We don't know what negotiations are going to, and we don't know, you know, what will happen with things like benefits and so forth. So everything here is really using this year's costs, and we know that's not realistic. I mean, if nothing else, teachers go up in step, for example. And by the third year, these positions are going to cost more than they do now, but we haven't accounted for that. We're getting our first presentation by Energy Ed, first presentation since they've started at the end of February. And at that time, they are expecting to give us some idea of how the program is going and what kinds of savings we might be realizing. You know, so maybe at that point, we can start to incorporate some of that in also. Central Hudson, we just had, not Central Hudson, the other PCG that we, we painted at the last meeting, have put things out to bid, and they had a number of contractors come in and respond, and that's looking good, but again, hard to project. But I would say if nothing else, we're looking at the fact that we're not there yet with the numbers that are on this page. There's room for improvement in all three years.
I guess, I mean, we're early enough in this game that it's, it's almost like this, you know, just coming from, you know, it's almost like we need, you know, we've got a strategic plan and we got this budget now that's stretching out to three years. It's almost like we need someone to come together and have a master plan for the district. And things like, you know the steps, I mean, so you, there's no reason you can't put those to some, I mean, start making these numbers more accurate. I mean, I know this year is the priority, but at the same time, we can be working on. I wouldn't think that would be too hard, is it, Michelle?
Well, you know, the stuff you did that went through the ball over, yeah, if it took 214 as well.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, there's, some things, it's not that hard to get the actor, more accurate numbers. So. So the bottom lines here basically are what these numbers obviously have. And you based your, obviously, million three this year on fairly hard numbers with the exception of a couple of big ones with, with health and skating. Next year, you kind of assumed that same thing to come in too. And the, the reductions between prior ones, how far back does that go? One, two, three?
Most of them are within the last three years. There are some that go back a little bit further. The oldest one would be the first one on the page, which is the elimination coordinator of technology. That was easily five years ago, but most of this is in the last few years.
I mean, I think we made, I guess I'm saying, I think we made good progress last year. Just gotta keep, something can be better and better and better, so, yeah. So then expect.
Can we take a closer look at our youth program, our, our, I mean, we have five people in that program, two hardware people, software, I mean, we're not a big, we're not a big school district. Everybody else is taking hits. Is there any way to combine somebody, somebody to do both jobs or, you know, do we need two hardware? Do you have that many computers that break down and we have to have somebody? Okay.
Honestly, I mean, technology has probably taken as a department the biggest hit overall. We lost the coordinator. Jill took over and someone back function. We lost a technology integrator and then a second, actually two technology integrators, which had a lot to do with maintaining things in the buildings, even though they're all supposed to be really working with the teachers to help them use the technology. A lot of times it came down to simply going in and fixing the simple problem. That now falls on the techs who do the repairs. We have so much dependent on technology, and every year it grows from state. And every year it grows, from state reports that we have to submit electronically with information from our data system, to parent portal, youth for kids, IEP Direct, RTIM, which is for the RTI, response to intervention. We have my learning plan for keeping track of the professional development hours, which is required by the state for teachers. We're missing some offhand, but there's a huge number that are finance manager for the business office in trying to cut back on staff. We're doing things like online purchase orders. If these systems, and that's just the instructional program from an administrator point of view in terms of things the teachers and the administrators and clerical staff use to keep things going, student recording systems. We also then have, of course, software that the kids use and the computers that the kids use, which is becoming more and more apart of what they do. Once a computer goes down, you lose a lot of time, whether it's in the classroom and a teacher has to wait to have it fixed, that's time without being able to use that software or that system. We've got programs, you know, for example, at the schools, the Project Lead the Way, which is very technology-dependent, without having support in place to readily get to those computers and fix the problems and install software and do updates and maintain the computers. Every month, the techs have to spend evening hours, for example, going around to every person who has a laptop in the district and updating their software by hand in terms of setting it up, getting it going and making sure that it's been done. So, you know, certainly, if you want to explore that area, it's something we can look at. But I really think that the fact that we are able to maintain everything that we have is extremely complicated and growing. I would hate to see the technology go down and, you know, have kids as well as adults affected by it because it stops business. I mean, I know, you know, we kid around, but on days when the electricity goes out, even for a short while, it's like, well, you know, seems to come to a halt because everybody is so dependent, everyone is on the computer.
Just to, you know, just coming back conceptually, like, some of this information sure is here, but I think can be maybe represented in another way. Like, you know, one thing we hear come up, and I know we had Lori give a presentation on AIS, you know, like, here talks about total number of students. But it's almost like we need a little bit of an org chart, you know, just like Jim's talking about technology. You know, we see that there's six people and just seeing how it, because I don't even, having two kids in the district, can't understand, you know, all the reading teachers, who they're servicing. And I get that there's this many teachers and they're servicing this many kids, but you do hear things like, you know, six kids here, there's kids that are getting it that don't necessarily, you know, really need it or whatever, so.
I don't think that's true anymore. In fact, I was checking into that.
And I'm just saying, so we can ask better questions as we get closer and closer. I mean, I still don't have a grasp sometimes of, just like Jim was talking about technology, how this goes. And I'm not saying give me eight pages of all our job descriptions, but just, here's who we have, here's kind of summary of what they do, and here's who they're supervising. This is, you know, and that should be true for, you know, the business department. Because, you know, I find it hard to keep track of that, too.
Just throwing it out, I mean, I don't, I would like to see this happen just for subbing out our technology. The only problem with that is they're not, you know, if you don't know what you're going to get to fix the problem, or who's going to be there, they're not going to know a program, who's running what. I mean, is there a possibility of finding a competent company to do all the technology for us? Or?
I think we did look into it lots. In fact, at one time, we used to contract the BOSEs and it cost more than our own guys. We actually eliminated the BOSE service. So my initial answer is, you're probably not going to find somebody less expensive. If BOSEs wasn't less expensive, then we would have paid on it.
You're not going to get the service that you have.
Absolutely.
The people here.
These people come after, set up, we need to meet them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it just, it might not pay at all.
Same thing that's here, is that, would that be discussed going through the contract?
Yes, actually, I'd say yes. This would still have, you have consultants or outside contractors coming in and providing services for 2,000, I'd say.
I think it's more just for everybody's, again, educating everybody. There's nothing in here really about how we utilize BOSEs that's misunderstood a lot. So I mean, add a BOSE section in here. So you know that we're using BOSEs, but it's also costing us less. Like, you know, maybe we didn't use BOSEs for this, but just one example, it's costing us. If you're going to look into or add on.
The reduction in that was, what is that, what might do to the other program?
I will ask Marco for more details on that before the review. He's done some of this work before, so I guess that's my idea is already.
At what point, if we just go through the manual, March is pretty much the presentation.
March is the proposed budget. But at the next meeting, we'll have this formally presented, the discussion. Second meeting, we continue to discuss and finalize or somewhat finalize come to some consensus anyway on what you'd like to see reduced for the upcoming year. And then we have more discussion time, the first meeting in March, and the second meeting is when the proposed budget comes out. Now, at that time, it still isn't necessarily done. You don't hold on it until April, so there are still changes made at that point.
Oh, can we make sure that this gets online so everybody can see these are good, right?
Yes.
Because if we're going to ask for input of the community at this meeting, they should have the same view to it that we have, so they can have.
Well, maybe.
We have a section under budget input, but in the meantime, when it first goes up, I'll make sure it goes into these right front and center on the webpage where you have that, all the news that scrolls down.
And it'll be posted the eighth, eleventh day?
It'll be a link to it.
And then, on tomorrow?
Probably Thursday. I have to just make a couple of quick changes and be able to get it. Our person who does the website is not here every day at the moment. That was one of the cuts.
Are there copies we can look at tonight?
We don't have copies available. You probably want to make them or do you want to wait till it's online?
I just think we should release it to everybody at the same point. So I would say, two days, we should be able to have it out.
The director of curriculum producing has a backlist for bonus core curriculum.
You know, I mean, I'd probably sound like a recording, you know, everything on this list has an impact.
I mean, as far as, do we have some, you know, we got to go back to the department head type thing?
No, the, the idea, part of the reason for putting that in the second year is to have one more year where she can work extensively with the staff. At point eight, she'd still be here four days a week so that, you know, it starts to cut back eventually. I would see that more and more of the work would be taken on by the principals, which they worry about here, too, because they already have more observations that have to be done. Much, much different type of teacher evaluation that has to be done that involves a lot of one-on-one conversation with people and viewing of not only observations but portfolios. They have to do walk-in observations of teachers multiple times a year as per state requirements that are a little, you know, but, but part of the idea of putting that a year ahead and, you know, starting with a small cut to that point is that you would still have somebody there to do a good portion of that work. And then, you know, after three years, the teachers should be more comfortable with the common course standards and the new assessments until the state changes them again. And, you know, but nothing in here is ideal. You know, just as you said before, if we could keep everything here, I think for the most part, there's a need for it and, and in a way, it does have an impact. But we're only so many teachers, even with two.
I know we're kind of budget right now, but Jill, I mean, something's changed, right? With this whole evaluation thing, have they kind of scrapped? I'm just wondering if Jill can explain what's going on?
Sure.
All this stuff I'm reading in the paper, can we just paraphrase it and tell me where we stand with, you know, evaluations?
At the great dental letters.
Okay.
The first thing that happened, as you recall, a couple of years ago, they raised the cut score in the test. That was the first ouch that they randomly said instead of making this.
Teacher evaluation?
Oh, let me just.
Is that okay? All right, I will check if you're going.
Yeah, because it does all really connect in the end. So they raised the cut scores and what happened was, in answer to some of your questions about academic intervention, we had many more, almost no students getting fours in the state. A bulk getting threes and a new chump getting twos. All ones and twos skipped the RTI process, go directly to AIS, do not pass, go. We have no choice, regulation says so. So suddenly, two years ago, and then this year, we had a plethora of students that needed to be scheduled for academic intervention and we did not add staff. After the state did that, they raised the AMO, and that is the average measurable objective, which is a random number. After the state does this magical equation with the bottom third of the state, they can determine what the number should be for your school based on your scores. And the example that we came up against with four times the numbers that had happened in the past was that Todd, we did not make AMO for the subgroup SWD students with disabilities for two years in a row, which made us not make AYP. Now, why that's so important and why I wanted to take you through that cycle is because at the same time, the commissioner has made, teachers are now, have a individual number identifier that is connected to the course that they teach and the students that are in that class. So that when the state tests come about this year, teachers in grades four through eight, the state will know who was in their class and what the score was. And they will determine a number that they will send to us that we add to the teacher evaluation. So the traditional teacher evaluation that we've just negotiated with the union to change to a new model, but it's very similar to what we had grown to, is 60% of their evaluation. 20% will be the state test and 20% will be the local test. And that takes me into the technology question. The local assessment is an online assessment. Ultimately, it will be grades K through 12. It is a totally online assessment. So that the principals are going to have to create a schedule, given the limits of our technology. So for example, in an elementary school like this, this one one, so there are three hours for this test, three separate hours. So the principals have to schedule how that's going to rotate through that room. There have to be people, not teachers necessarily, could be teaching assistants or trained people that are in that room that have to be able to pick up the telephone and contact our technology people if anything happens when that child logs on. Because that test is graded by the NWEA and the results come back to us in 48 hours. So we must be up and running and have the technology present. The test, we don't know how long it will take us, but it could probably, it takes at least four to six weeks to cycle the kids through to complete the testing process. So the, the, the 20%, the local 20%, we're going to be doing for the four through eight teachers next year. We're starting the NWE contract, and we're going to bring it forward to you next month. So that we can start to get trained and get that put in place. We don't know where the state's going for the, how they're going to count the 20% for the state test for the K through two teachers, nor do we know how they're going to finally do it for the nine through 12 teachers. So there's a lot of conversation about that. So the new teacher evaluation requires, for example, that traditionally, in all school districts, tenured teachers, if they were observed every year. There are districts that have teachers, tenured teachers, observed every three years. We did it always every year. But the two of the four domains in the evaluation have to do with teacher preparation and teacher actual classroom teaching. So essentially, what the state is saying is, based on one observation, you cannot make a determination in an evaluation. So you have to either add more formal observations or create a system or walkthrough observations where three to five times, as we had decided for our first year out, principals are going to walk through these classrooms and report in a form that goes directly to the teacher, what they saw. So that when they do the evaluation of the teachers, the two domains that are specifically related to planning and teaching, that they have more evidence to show.
Yeah, so nothing's really changed a lot in the last month or so, for now?
In the last month or so. Well, there's back and forth about the 20% and how that's going to translate and how they're going to tell it to us.
We just keep plugging along and we're doing what we're doing best.
Are you talking at all about the whole?
Yes, yes.
Right now, that is something that is looking to legislate, but until that happens.
We're going to keep using what we've determined of all kind of the radio.
Right, that's nowhere we act really. It's just in a proposal stage.
Anything else?
Can I ask the other questions?
If you allow, I just want to budge it.
I believe if you want to do that, that's fine. I said, if we choose to open on any of the topics, we can, that we don't have to. I mean, you can, except nobody has the information, which is what next we do.
Well, I have something in relation to the summer academy. Has that been some?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Is that just the people that signed up that weren't showing up? Or is that, so there were a lot of people that got letters that they were eligible for the summer academy? Was she just looking at people that actually called and signed up?
Yes.
Because I know transportation has been a big issue with a lot of the parents. I don't think it's disinterest. I think it's, it a possibility of getting your kid there over the summer, because I think it started at nine or.
Yeah.
So I really don't think it's disinterest. I think it's an inability for a lot of people.
Yeah.
And also with the, the technology, I mean, we pay our teachers more than colleges, IT departments. We pay our technology more than colleges and universities, IT departments. Does that make sense to you? It doesn't to me. And I don't know why we don't send out our servers. You talk about BOSEs, but you know, if I'm going to buy computer software, BOSEs isn't usually one that comes to the top of my list of good computer software. So I just think that our technology department really seriously needs real consideration of what we want to do as a district, what we really need to do, what we can send out. And there's no reason you can't get contractors. They are here every day, but you're not paying benefits. You know, there's a data specialist. You need a data specialist every single day, full-time. I find that hard to believe, but maybe justified.
My child, my daughter really got a lot out of the summer academy. Her attendance was perfect. She really benefited from it and hopefully they'll continue it. And it's too bad they don't teach the kids to. And it's too bad they don't teach the kids to fix some of the machines, because my son would be crackerjack at it. Think about it, really.